We plan to follow the Albert Gallatin work session in order. We will begin today in public forums.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to October's regular meeting or work session. I do have Mark Goodwin here for public forums. We'll start with public forum. Mr. Goodwin?
Are you all right, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Lieutenant Payton said, my name is Mark Goodwin and I'm here representing the Albert Gallatin Softball Boosters. I'm coming to you today to seek approval for the team to attend a spring training at the Ripken Experience in Merrill Beach, South Carolina. Been involved with the trip with the baseball team for the past four years and we thought that we'd like to do this this year for the softball team. After seeing what the training has done for the boys, watching them bond as teammates, and having lifelong memories with their friends, we thought we'd try to provide the same opportunity for the girls this year. The Softball Boosters will be fundraising and getting donations to cover all expenses, so therefore there'll be no cost to the school district regarding this trip. That doesn't mean that we would turn down any consideration that might be made. The dates of the trip, we were looking to go to for March the 19th through the 23rd of 2020. We're looking to leave the school on the evening of the 19th, which is a Thursday, and return on Monday evening the 23rd. We're asking that the players be excused from school on Friday, the 20th, and then Monday, the 23rd, with the understanding that all students will be in school the day we leave, which would be the 19th, and the day after we return, which would be the 24th. We'll be using a chartered bus for transportation to and from the venue, and the venue provides the housing. And the boosters are looking to raise enough money to provide all meals for all students that are going to attend the trip. And that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. No?
Mark, if you could give me an itinerary, just email it to me, and that's something that we would have to put on the board agenda for approval.
Okay.
Natalie, George, we have a copy. I would have a copy. Have you got itinerary and anything to do with spoken about this evening?
Okay.
Okay, I can get that off. When did you need the approval by?
Well, we're hoping, you know, obviously to receive approval with best going to be the case as quickly as possible. A lot of arrangements need to be made with the bus company, with the Ripken Experience, and also the fundraising, you know, which we've already begun. We would need to make sure we have enough time to reach our goals to do that, so.
I would like to talk to you in our itinerary as well as Mr. Hudson, who's the high school principal, and Mr. Dupont as the A.D. And I'll get that, if I can get that on the board agenda for Wednesday night, they can vote on that soon, Wednesday evening.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, the coaches, the three coaches would be attending. There'll obviously be, you know, a large amount of parents that are going, as well. We haven't really gotten that far yet to name names. You know, we want to take the first step to get the board's approval to do this, so.
But the Chevron will have to have their parents.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that is, that's the case.
Okay, it's correct, right, the same way we did with the baseball.
Right.
And they are within the guidelines.
And I can get that information over to me in the morning, is that?
If that, that would be fine.
Okay. And your email address, I can locate online?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And is there anyone else for public forum?
I have Sam Roberts from the Garland Company. I'm, Sam had passed out three issues of Spiral Bygdon regarding a roof management program. And I also had, after discussion last month, I did have Sam put together details for all the roofs in our district that need maintained, maintenance projects, or roof repairs. I believe the focus of this, Sam, is Smithfield Elementary. You did an inspection on that roof there. So Sam Roberts from the Garland Company. Go ahead, Sam.
Well, thank you very much for having me back. It's been a couple of years since I've spoken with you folks. We did the projects in 2018 in high school and middle schools. Those projects went fairly well. We kind of completed during the wettest year on record, which definitely slowed things down, but still I didn't get those projects done for you. So after completing the 2018 projects, I met again with Mr. Pegg. We talked about prioritization of the roof system within your district as part of the roof management plan. And Smithfield Elementary was definitely at the top of the list, just with the number of leaks that you experienced over the past, especially the three to five years. It was definitely the number one top priority for the next building in the district that needed some roof renovation or roof or two. So I did complete another follow-up inspection of Smithfield Elementary. And that roof actually, we actually considered it in 2018 as part of that project, but we decided to hold off on that time, even though it wasn't in fairly good condition. So we did complete a whole inspection of it here just recently. Been on that roof a number of times. We've had quite a few repairs up there that were completed both internally and externally, bringing some contractors in. But when we completed the most recent inspection just a few weeks ago, we saw a lot of the same conditions we saw over the past few years, but some of them had accelerated. So some of the worst conditions on the roof are, number one, ponding water, okay? There's some areas up there where the paper insulation is not allowing that water to drain to the internal drains. It's sitting on the roof and accelerating the deterioration of the membrane. It's also prolonging the leaks that do occur within the school. The second issue out there is fastener backout, I like to call it, okay? It's fasteners basically that are penetrating the roof membrane slowly but across the entire surface of the roof. So that particular roof is constructed with polystyrene insulation. It's a very soft insulation, like over here on the high school and middle schools. When you replace those roofs, you can use polyisone. It's rigid, okay? So that soft insulation compresses and allows those fasteners to poke through your membrane. That's another one of the issues you're having up there. Then when I was up there with Jim and Keith just recently, we also did see a number of seam splits and membrane splits across the surface of the roof. So as you folks know, there have been quite a few leaks in that particular roof over the last four to five years. And you have invested a fairly significant amount of money in repairs, just from the ones that I've been involved with over the past few years. So due to the condition of that roof, we would recommend a replacement. If you choose to move forward with any roofing work in 2020, that would be our highest priority or recommendation for you to move forward for replacement of that particular roof. We did look at other options, you know, how can we stop the water from coming in without having to go through a full replacement? Any other options, really restoration, we would apply coating to the surface of the roof. But we had to roll that out for this particular situation because of a couple of reasons. Number one is the ponding water. Ponding water will deteriorate any restoration coatings and also void the warranty. And number two is the fastener backout, okay? I wouldn't want you folks to invest in a restoration coating if your membrane is failing from the underside. Fasteners will break up your membrane. So that just left us with the actual full replacement of the roof as the recommended option for that particular facility. Now, if we were to assist you again with that particular project as we get over to high school and middle schools, we'd follow a very similar process as we did in 2018. First step would be to assemble a very detailed specification package for you. We've worked with Mr. Pegg and the administration on the general conditions that protect the school district and also have a very detailed spec section and drawings and details for the contract. Then assist you with the pre-bid meetings, making sure we have plenty of local contractors coming in. Actually, on some of the projects last year, we had guys that actually lived on the same street as North Middle School and they were working on the middle school. So it was great to see guys, you know, running just down the road to do the project. But we'd be bringing in as many local contractors as we could. We'd then hold a pre-bid meeting. Bids are coming to you folks. Give them questions about the bids. I can help interpret them for you. Pre-construction meeting, and then as last time, we'd be onsite throughout the project to ensure quality of the installation, okay? It's my job to be on board on the roof and make sure that that roof system that contractors installing is installed as specified, so that protects the district. You guys give them warranty, I'll take their hand for that particular project. So that's our recommendation for Smithfield Elementary. Does anybody have any questions about that roof system?
I see the budget range that you listed here. From $765,000 to $825,000. Can you explain why there's a wide range?
So I think it's a fairly wide range because labor is very volatile, okay? It's been moving up and down quite a bit, especially after the last two years. And the price that you get for the replacement of that roof is highly dependent on your timing. As these contractors get their schedules more and more filled up, labor rates are going to increase, okay? So not knowing exactly when you're going to bid the project out, I had to give you a range, just so you understand. They're most likely to be somewhere in between there. I will tell you the time that you're going to get the most interest from contractors, the most available contractors for a project of that size, is bidding it out sometime in November, December of this year for a summer project next year.
How long would a project like this take?
It'll take us a while, okay? So my recommendation, similar to what you guys did over at the middle schools and high school in 2018, is to allow the contractors to work second shift, maybe start on April 15th, somewhere around there, so they can get the job started beforehand and make sure that you get it done within the summer. But a job of that size, just plan for the summer and you get it done in the winter, fantastic. Really weather dependent. As I said, 2018, wettest year on record that we had, and that job at high school dragged on all the way to October because of that. Nothing really moved to the topic, but yeah, we planned for the summer.
Sam, could you elaborate a little bit on our conversation in regards to like a management maintenance plan? We know that Smithfield is in bad need of a roof. But some of the other roofs we talked about, I know in South, there was a new roof that was put on the gymnasium portion of the high school. The rest of it needs work, and then also in North, there was a new roof put on over the top of the building section, but not gymnasium. So could you elaborate on what we discussed there, how that could be handled?
Yeah, so we put together a five-year plan, basically, okay? Taking a look at all of the roof sections in the district, hey, here's your prioritization, one through five or six, on what roofs we need to do some work over the next four to five years. And that's a document Mr. Pegg also sent to you electronically, so you can get it out to all the folks.
And it's updated, it's not the one you did in 2015 or '16, correct?
Correct. It is updated to show the recent replacements that were completed, so I can get that to you. But basically, taking a look at the top six, three priorities for the district. Number one is definitely Smithfield, as we discussed. Number two, we discussed in a recent meeting, is probably the remainder of South and Middle School. And that's one where you guys have an opportunity to restore the existing membrane, okay? The particular construction of that roof is you have very good slope, which drains the water off the membrane quickly. But the membrane is aging, it's starting to shrink and constrict, which causes splits. So I walked that roof last year and I found there were thirty different, very small splits in the membrane. We had those repaired. But what's going to happen is that as that membrane continues to age, those splits will continue to occur. So that membrane right now is at a good point where you could consider restoring it, which is about a third of the cost of replacement, in literally replacing it in five years down the road. That's probably your next priority, either for 2020, maybe 2021. My plan is to get back up on that, do a link here this fall with Jim and Keith, walk it, identify any small punctures or openings, and get those repaired before too much moisture gets in and the line insulation. After that, your next highest priority is probably the North Middle School gymnasium and the wing roofs there. We did identify some wood insulation in those areas, those particular sections.
Any questions for Mr. Roberts?
Just one call up. So we want to do the Smithfield project in summer. We should be voting on, to permit you to do the specifications, either this meeting or the latest next one.
I would say October, November. That's going to get you the most ideal timeframe to bid it. Of course, you can always wait, you know, if you have to think about it, that's fine. It's just as we get closer into February, March, those contractors will start to fill up. Using this year as a reference, many of the large contractors doing rainbow projects of this size in western Pennsylvania were fairly filled up by the end of January, first half of December.
I'd like to see that comment.
I guess my next question would be, how does this fit into our financial?
With a project of this size, what we're looking at also is the possibility of launder funding. If the district were looking at doing the roof, borrowing money, and putting out debt to be further, if we're going to do any refinancing, that would be combining with additional harm. But if we could totally cost, we would have to pull it out in the months of cost.
Like, would you suggest, listening to Mr. Roberts, with North and South, would you suggest that be done in the next year, two, three years with North and South?
You know, South is, so you're at a point where, with South Middle School, that you can restore a roof that's in fair condition, but once it gets past fair condition, it's not worth restoring.
And right now, you on last fall, were planning on getting back on that roof with Jim and Keith. I know Keith was on it recently and said he wanted to walk it with you again. And so right, well, when you saw it last, was it in good condition or fair?
It was in fair condition. So you probably have a couple of years left to make that decision, at the longest.
And you said that would be a third of the cost to restore it, and what kind of guarantee comes with restoration?
For many, where the ten to twenty years comes with restoration, depending on the type of system that you have.
And a new roof is thirty years.
Yes.
So restoration, third of the price, minimum ten years, possibly twenty. And that's the same with North, too?
No. North, I'd have to inspect the roof again. There was quite a bit of wet insulation that I saw in the wing roofs, especially at North. So if you have too much wet insulation, I would have to, basically, because you don't want track moisture before you do restoration coating. Now, over top with the gym, though, that might be an opportunity for a restoration. I need to have infrared scans of those, though, to determine how much wet insulation there is forcing.
And Vince, if you're talking of bond and borrowing, would you want to do that now for those other projects? Or would you borrow at that time when you needed to actually do the project?
I think it really depends on how far out we're looking to perform these projects, if you can only hold on to your funds for three years.
So if you do it, you have to have the North and South as well done within that three-year period.
How's the ballpark to look, Vince? Like always before, when we've refinanced, we've refinanced and we were able to save money.
There is some savings there in the roof. You are looking, you're hovering just above the magical number, whatever is stated every, say, 42%. These should be your plans, so that's, that's what we're, it's just about that 2%.
Vince, at Smithfield, there's also boilers, boilers that are going to be needing replaced. They're doing a boiler inspection tomorrow. Mr. Hudson called today, they're going to be out to do a boiler inspection tomorrow. That would need to be included in borrowing. As a new boiler, you're looking at, I think it was $225,000. And that's just with the boiler. That's not with engineering, the engineer, the architecture, the abatement. That old boiler's going to have asbestos in it, and you'd have to do the abatement. So I don't know how much more that would be. I think Jim and Keith said for exhibition, maybe $100,000 on top of the $225,000. So that would all need to be taken care of at the same time.
So what would you have on the $1 million?
But we do have more time for North.
You do, yes, yes, it's definitely not an emergency, but it's on the priority list, yes.
The ballpark figure that C S E gave for the boiler was $225,000, but that was not including engineering and abatement and any additional upgrades.
Which is less than we spent on the football term. We must realize that. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, a priority. If there's, if they, they've got to have a building that's not leaking. So to me, when you compare a million dollars to keep a quality school open and running and keep our class sizes low, a million dollars to that is a better investment than $300,000 to some thousand dollars for a football.
Our class sizes are not low right now.
They're not low, no. And they're going to get bigger if we, if we close this hole. We need, in my opinion, we need to close more than one school for the district, just five, five each way.
I think I read last month, I did, on how many, we have $1.1 million in taxes not paid. And let's just be real here, come next June, taxes will have to be raised, no matter what. You can't have a low wage. You can't have, basically, you can't have your pay needed too. You can't have, spend all this money without raising taxes. And there are people, obviously, in our district that can't afford to pay the taxes.
Do we have, have we got anything in the county in terms of the funds that they've been sitting on for years that haven't forwarded to us?
I have not, not funded this time.
I mean, you're talking about the potential of a couple hundred thousand dollars just in what they owe from tax sales and judicial sales that haven't been given to us yet.
Here's another source of revenue that we haven't considered. And it's a source of revenue that may come or may not come. The school district owns 60 acres of mineral rights underneath the platform. And there's a gas well in German Township that's going to come online in the next year or two.
It's already leased, I believe.
It's been leased, but I want to know when our royalty payments are going to start coming to the district for that lease. It was signed in 2015. Maybe we should reach out to Chevron.
You don't want to push it.
To see if they can come here and tell us what their plans are.
I would like to see, I would like to see, so, and the, a line item on the agenda to go forward with getting the specifications. So that, I mean, it's obvious that Smithfield needs to be improved. We know that it needs to be boiler. This has been kicked down the can, but according to what I've been saying, it's, so you did mention in 2018 that Smithfield was part of the process, but I don't remember anything being presented to the board about Smithfield. In fact, I acquired about it and I think of it.
I remember you acquiring, yes.
And I think the response was, well, we don't know what we're going to do with the elementary schools, so.
That's what I was going to do.
So you've known since then that Smithfield, before then, that Smithfield's a problem.
Well, the roof replacement plan that you did in either 2015 or '16 did state that Smithfield's roof should be replaced within three to five years. We're at the three-year mark right now. So that's, that's why I asked you to come out, get on the roof, look at it. We've had some leaks. So we're needing to decide what direction we want to go. If you want to replace the roof, you have an estimated cost. If you have a, if you want to do the new boiler, if you have an estimated cost, we're looking at a million plus. If you want me to look at anything else, you mentioned closing schools. I don't know if that would definitely be an option. I, that's something I can look into. We've tried to give that for November's meeting. If the board wants me to look at that as an option. If you don't, give me directions as to what you want me to look at.
I think before we commit to over a million dollars anywhere, the administration needs to bring recommendations for district-wide. Building usage plan, whatever, whatever that entails. Whether it's keeping all the buildings open, if they're all going to be open, then certainly they need, they need to be up to standards.
If you're going to close the elementary or middle school, where are you going to go to get it?
Well, that's what I would have to look at to see what would work, if it could work, if it should be a possibility.
Quality of education needs to be the guidepost from every decision this board makes. And if that means that we have to cut in non-educational areas, then that needs to be where the cuts may be, not in closing the elementary school. And it's not just, if you, I can't, I can't understand how, if we've got classes right now at the elementary school level, there's 30-plus kids, that by closing one school and shipping those kids wherever, that's not going to increase class sizes. Physically, there just doesn't, I mean, do we have that much room space in the other elementary schools that we can take an entire school and divide it up on the this year and not have class sizes that are 30-plus?
You would, I would have to look at everything. I mean, there is, there is, there is some room with functional capacity, but I know at AL Wilson, there's not. I think you're at your capacity. I know Frenchville and Masontown are not. I don't have the feasibility study with me.
And how much are we going to spend on busing, from busing all the kids that are local to Smithfield to the other places? Or, I mean, you know, because I want to say that this one, what I was talking about.
Let's do the numbers as far as to see what we have, where we have to go. Here we've been worried about the bus station.
We've known for years that Smithfield was top of, why does this?
Nobody will ever.
I have to say that once.
I mean, we wanted not to raise taxes. Where is all this money going to come from?
Where did it come from when we did the jerk on the, or took the new purpose?
That was out of a capital project, capital factors.
And that's exactly where it come from for this problem, that Smithfield is out.
Yeah, if you're going to place, they're going to be, and they're going to leave the taxpayers, they're going to leave, they're leaving now.
This is not a new problem. This didn't just fall on our laps today. This has been an ongoing issue for years. So the idea of let's stop and look at these, you know.
I'm for the teachers, but I'm also for the taxpayers and everybody else.
Yeah, and you know what? You know who I'm for? I'm for the students.
Me, too.
We want to make sure.
We all are. We all are.
Sometimes I doubt it.
Well, I'm sorry you doubt that, but we are, our best interest is for the kids here. I could stake a tire to something, Mr. Lawrence.
And if that was the case, we would all be trying to keep Smithfield open at all costs. It makes, I don't know what I'm talking about, to keep Smithfield open and we spent on that turf. I just, I, you can't get past that.
We keep on talking about Smithfield. There, we have other elementarys that are going to be looked at. And as far as that turf, we had to have the turf. If we could have went back to grass and Mr. Howard, it would have been $40,000 a year maintaining. And as I said before, if you don't want football and if you don't want the sports, I feel like you can't just pit on that athletes, then all the extracurricular has to go. It's not fair. Just like one teacher pitting the music teacher against the business.
When we put the turf in 15 years ago, it was costing $40,000 a year to maintain the football field. And it more than paid for itself.
To me, it's more important to have appropriate class sizes and elementary schools that have roofs that don't leak and boiler systems that are effective and aren't going to fail than having extracurriculars. And extracurricular activities are wonderful and they're great, but I'm going to prioritize quality education. It all goes.
And I say it all goes. I agree with you there. Twenty-four years ago, I did not believe there was a building in this district that didn't have a roof that was leaking. And the people who are on this board now, we took care of those buildings. We redid two middle schools, we built two new elementary schools, and we took care of the elementarys and all the roofs. It has now been almost 30 years. Our bonds are almost paid for. And as Mr. Muzalowsky said, it all comes around again. And I think it was stated that during that remodeling, that nothing was done to Smithfield. There were things done to Smithfield. Flooring was put in, lockers were put in, windows were put in, the same as this building. Now, at that time, Bibble probably maybe didn't need anything done to it. I came along when they were in the middle of remodeling all the elementarys. But don't sit, don't, anyone try to tell me that we didn't do anything in all these years. We took care of those buildings. So those children could go in there, those students could go in there, and they could learn with heat and not being rained on. And if the cycle is all starting over again, so please don't tell me that I did not care about the students that I would get, because I did. Let's move on. I agree with Mr. Donna. I don't know if everyone else says. We need to have some figures. We need to have some input on, on the buildings.
I will, is it necessary to do, the feasibility study that we have is 2010. For us, is it necessary to do another feasibility study? For us, is it necessary to do another feasibility study or can I go and utilize the information from that feasibility study?
I mean, I, I don't know whether or not that feasibility study, whether the enrollment projections have held up or whether there have been any intervening events that would make that feasibility study not useful for that analysis. But can you tell me who conducted it?
Craft Tree, Word of Ball, and Associates.
Are they still in business?
As far as I know, yes.
I mean, I, I suspect, one option might be to go back to whoever at, at the firm authored the study to see whether or not they might be able to do an update, see whether, you know, yeah, on an inexpensive basis, it could be updated so that you wouldn't have to go full-blown to get another feasibility study. Obviously, that, that would short, give you a shortcut to, to get to where you need to go as far as the houses goes, if you have to go for another feasibility study. You're looking at several months of the, of the.
Several months before you don't have it. You're saying you're going to get the best pricing for labor for a roof, that you need to have that in by December?
And if I may too, one, one option you folks do have is you can bid it out, okay? Your investment at this point is basically to that and consequently newspaper, and then you have ninety days to accept the contract with those folks. So what that does for you is they give you a little leeway to make a decision, but you're still on the contractor's schedule and you're having a bid for you and, and you'll, so that's one option.
Thank you, Sharon.
We also redid a, a whole high school and built a gymnasium, so our children can be at our school to graduate instead of going to the state.
Okay, so anybody else for public forum?
I, I can wait.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Come, come on, Chris.
Um, I'd first like to present this to you, you obviously, you've presented, saying you've paid for multiple times of taxes on week A, those are my records. Um, I can provide all the taxes.
I only wish, I only wish everyone else could do that, the one point one million that is owed to us. I don't really need to see that.
Extracurricular activities, uh, the definition is something that takes place in addition to regular school or work duties. Uh, we're talking, obviously, about bonus dollars and revenues not coming in. Unfortunately, we have a lot of elderly people, a lot of people that are in financial trouble in this district. Multiple, you know, you said you, if it were up to you, multiple schools would be closed, that's.
In order, in order, I think, for the district to, um, survive.
But what about, what about our kids surviving?
It, Condesville did it, so we're, we're, I, I look at a, a district and Condesville did it, and they're, they're surviving, they're fine.
You know something that any county, their superintendent doesn't get paid? That's, that's how they save some money.
Well, that's a very.
Well, we're comparing schools, we're going to.
I don't know.
I, I, I agree with you.
I'm working comparing schools, I'm comparing.
Personally, I think that's the situation, I have all the facts.
I did, I submitted a fact finding form for that, so.
I have all the facts.
Just comparing for you. Um, amounts, in my opinion, that you've saved money, um, assistant coaches were paying a year, fifty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars a year at Albert Gallant for assistant coaches. High school sports, seventy-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars per coaches. That's just at the high school level. Middle school is over eight thousand dollars for extra in arts, and their coaches are making over twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. How many of our kids are getting scholarships based on athletic abilities?
I, I can name one or two right now, they graduated in the last couple of years.
Okay.
That their scholarships would add up to probably close to a million dollars just for kids who have gotten scholarships because of athletic opportunities, as well as kids with, with the arts. They've gotten full scholarships to participate in musicals if they go to Cal U. So I would never, I'm, I'm obviously an advocate for public education, I'm a firm believer in it. My kids have all gone through public ed and graduated, and I have a second grader in this district. I would never advocate that we eliminate the arts or sports. That is a huge reason, that kids have a connection to school, they want to come to school, and they don't drop out. My opinion is if you eliminate the arts and sports, you're going to see a drastic decline in your district's enrollment, and we're going to be paying triple the amount inside your charter school, regardless of moving to a district neighboring so they can participate in the arts and athletics. So, I mean, it's a big part of high school, it's a big part of junior high school. I've, it there, it does create a lot of opportunity for students to go to post-secondary college, universities, play in sports where their tuition is paid for.
I agree that it's an excellent opportunity, but I think the opportunity is better spent with education.
I'm guessing you don't have a child who, who's.
I should, yes.
No, you don't like a kid that participates in any, in any kind of sport? Because I bet you, if you have any mother out here or father that had one who was on the football team, softball team, they would be up here and they would be arguing.
There's a big, there's a big.
My daughter does play sports in our district.
There's a big difference between saying eliminate the program and saying we're going to take volunteer coaches. That's a big difference. You don't have to eliminate the programs to save a hundred thousand dollar plus by saying, we're going to take volunteer coaches. And you know what, I have enough faith in the community in this district to think that there would be quality coaches that would step up and say, I'm going to do this on a volunteer basis because I care enough about the kids.
It's hard to get coaches who even want to be paid.
How many football coaches have they been there? Ben?
Dedicated all year volunteer for nothing.
And you know what, and I don't want to put our football coach on the spot, but, and I don't know him, but I would bet that, that he has a big enough heart for the program, that if he found out that people were going to eliminate salary, I would doubt that he would simply just say, hey, I'm going to do it anyway.
What about you?
Um, so, continue.
Um, additionally, the extracurricular activities, um, are at seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars, that's, um, yearbook and, and programs like that, that we should be giving those opportunities to our kids to do and not paying someone to do that. So it, it's just going over the information that I have, um, there's several positions that, that I personally see within the district that could either be a hundred percent volunteer or decrease the amount to save money.
Is there anyone else for public forums? Ron, what can you want to do?
I, I wanted to actually talk a little bit more about our oil and gas under platform. I did a little research, in two thousand and fifteen, the district placed a mental raise.
We did, I remember.
It was eighty-one thousand, something like that. So this well is going to send horizontal legs under the property. And it's already being drilled in German Township. So we're at least, we're within two years of seeing oil checks, at least. So I'd like to have administration reach out to Chevron so they can help Vince with some financial planning.
That, that's so, that's, you know, it is so, it just depends on, on how that well got up, I think it's like, yeah. I, I don't think there's any way they can say for sure, you know, or, I mean, they might be, if they well give out, or wells are there, they've got a chance of this.
It's perspective. Well, on that note, maybe we could look at selling them.
Selling the gas and water rights.
Selling the asset so our school district could.
I personally wouldn't be a fan of that because I think then that you've got the potential for ongoing revenues and royalties for generations, but.
It's again, it's just something that we could look into district-wide. I think Brownsville sold some of their mineral rights.
Um, I don't know, I just really could be more contacted, see if they could give us some sort of.
Yeah, Vince, Vince and I can try to get someone to call to see if they have any anticipated revenue for our district with the.
I'd just like to look at all the options.
Okay, um, there's someone else.
Okay, nobody else for public forum? Um, I'm going to go to principals, Mr. Wilson, I'm going to have you go first, I know you have to pick up your chats, I'm going to be Wilson. Um, A G North, any questions for Mr. Wilson in regards to A G North? Okay, no questions. Okay, I have high school, uh, administration here, any questions for the high school? A G South, Mr. Doug? Mrs. Baker, A L Wilson?
This, yeah, I, I, do you have any classes right now that have thirty-plus students? I'm sorry, do you have any classes right now at A L that have thirty, how many?
I do, um, two.
Two, what grade are you in, one in second grade? And, or are they just.
They are at third.
They are at third, okay, thank you.
Do you have ages in that room?
We have one age who splits per day.
Gives the enrollment partially due to the open enrollment that the district has that, uh, a student from anywhere in the district may attend at any school of their choice.
We do have quite a few.
So if enrollment would be the last, if that policy was not in place?
I think I looked at that this summer and it would be approximately like forty, forty-five times.
I think we were told Mr. Dunn that Smithville was only seven children, so that's like.
That's what your school.
That's almost too large, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Rosie, Mrs. Rosie here? Okay, and Mrs. Hock was off today. Dr. Witt, Plava?
Same question, do you have thirty-plus or thirty?
Yeah, third grade we do, and we split an age. And, uh, with open enrollment, um, our numbers are up there, so we do have students coming into other schools.
Thank you. Mr. Plisco, he's acting principal of Friendship Hill. Any questions for Mr. Plisco?
Same thing about the class, huh? Uh, third and fifth grade as well. I mean, twenty-seven, twenty-eighth, third grade. I would say thirty-two maybe in fifth. Uh, do have the eighth split, but that's, it's such a day in the classes as well. For us, the fifth grade too, I mean, it's twenty-five kids, four dozen life support that are in the class as well. Larger life support, which is also cool around the classes, classes.
Just a thing, when one of the board members mentioned open enrollment, that means that students within our district can choose to go to any, any school that they like. Do we have any students from other schools?
Well, with, with, with the open enrollment, that is, you can choose to go to any school, elementary school or middle school in our, in the district. If you're outside of residence area, you do have to provide transportation to it from school. Okay? Other students we have in the district, or that attend our district, a few years ago, the board passed a policy that if you worked in the district but didn't live in it, you can bring your students to the district, uh, tuition-free. So I don't know the number of that, uh, number of students who are outside the district that are deemed as non-residents. I know we don't give funding for those students because they're non-residents. So, but I can get a number for you and see how many that would entail.
I'm curious, and I'm curious if the students that are within the district, are, are they in the classes that are relatively large?
I do believe when we did that, we had, uh, Mr. Muzalas looking into what other districts do the policy for, and I believe we'll have it coming up in the same.
Of the, uh, elementary principals that are here, do you have any classes that are under twenty?
I, I think, uh, I had first grade, they've been a lot, I think they're eighteen.
So you're not looking.
I had second grade as well, as also around that, around four.
So you're not looking at a lot of extra room in your, in your school setting where you could fit a bunch more kids?
No.
No, just being realistic.
North is the school that's under, uh, doesn't, doesn't, has to be like seventy-five percent.
North and South are both, uh, lower than that.
Lower than that, that's why we're in that.
Now, I think Mason Town and Friendship Hill would be probably your two lowest schools as far as utilization of, of your, uh, I guess, functional capacity. So I, 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 I like that. Uh, she wants a number of students open enrollment in their classes, that's affecting some of the ones that have large class size.
And how many of them are not?
And how many that are non-residents, affecting class size. All right, um, any other questions for principals? Okay, Mr. Dupont is at the high school with, uh, a, I think we have soccer, is there soccer or volleyball tonight, or both? Okay, any questions with athletics that I can maybe address or ask Wayne, anything from board?
We don't, we don't address issues in executive session.
Yeah, there are some issues in executive session that I'd like to address with student confidentiality. Maintenance, we covered a lot of the maintenance, um, with Mr. Roberts from the Garland Company. Any other questions in regards to maintenance issues, concerns, or questions?
How's things going with our pilot program, Mr. Go there?
Um, right now, they're, they're going, um, well, they are keeping me informed, updated, I mean, with their regular rate. It's, it's a work in progress. I know that there's a lot that I'm dealing with daily with maintenance, uh, just trying to, a lot, a lot of it is the custodial side with the shortage of substitute custodians and trying to utilize overtime. So those are some things that we're trying to address. I know that you'll see on your, I think it was in your board package, I apologize, but, uh, I was recommending, right now, we pay substitute custodians nine fifty an hour. I was recommending that we raise that substitute wage to ten dollars an hour and try to attract some more substitute custodians. It's slim pickings, we only have a couple of subs, and that's every grand advertisements, not walking down with the face of subs in every capacity that you need some. And really, uh, didn't have any complaints. But as far as, any, any questions on maintenance? Okay, um, Fitz, anything with financial, other than questions we have with bonds and borrowing money for, uh, capital projects? Anything else at this time?
Yeah, Chevron, Chevron. In our, the balance, there were a few questions, they balanced the capital projects, we heard, it's about sixty thousand dollars.
So about sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand. Last week we committed ten thousand to the, uh, site.
We, we've talked today on several occasions about the fact that the county owes money that legal debt obligations produce. You know, every meeting, we have to make decisions because we're, we're trying to utilize our resources in a best way possible. Um, does it not make sense to put something on the agenda to move forward with legal action or, or some type of steps to make the county account for and relinquish the funds it's owed? I mean, let's face it, I mean, if you're, if you're a citizen and you don't pay your taxes, they're going to foreclose on your, your property, not foreclose, but put it in tax hell. And unless we step up and, and take some affirmative step, there's not going to be any pressure on them to make an accounting and distribute those funds.
I believe the last time, um, Mr. Price was here, and we did tell him that we, we wanted an exemption if we give up access. And I agree with her, we need to take some kind of, some kind of action against the county to let them know that we do not want to let them get away with this. This, and we do want our, our name, but I support that also, Cherry.
Would it be wise?
Let me just say that with regard to some of the legal issues there, let's talk about those in the executive session, but we can't talk about that, but.
Uh, Mrs. Beazak, elementary federal, where are you at?
Um, oh. I have this late question.
Yep, it's, anything you want to hear?
First, I, I just on a positive note, I just wanted to tell the board that I was very proud to see the high middle school staff today. They took a day-long training in basic life support, they were all doing CPR, they all got their certification cards. Um, they also had a follow-up training in the afternoon on seizure awareness and how to deal with that. And took some issues in the classroom regarding student helping out, so that was a very, um, very good training. Um, and I was very, um, was very, just. And it was very, it was very, just, the teachers were very much engaged. Hopefully, then elementary students, once we get a lot of time bringing, bringing that thing, came back to train. What was nice was our own teachers training with the assistance of Penn State faculty advisors. But our teachers did the training and then delivered the training to their own, so it was a, it was a valuable day. Also, I wanted to make the board aware that I did have a first meeting regarding the potential for the book adoption. Again, we keep reminding everyone that our textbooks are up, our contract with our current math series is up. We are currently exploring options. We have our first meeting, and A.L. Wilson took the K five teachers present, the math teachers, to hear the presentation regarding one of the series that we were considering. Um, we do not need to make a move at this time, but by the end, by March, April, we probably should make a commitment as to where we're gonna go. So, I am working closely with the teachers collectively. They're going to hear every presentation that comes, we are, narrow it down to three. And then we will see what we need to do, what we need to use, stick with fashion, whatever is economically a viable way to handle this need we're gonna have, that's true. The career fair, we've been planning November eighth for the elementary fifth graders in the high school. We're saying things we did last year, so that's how we're gonna stay planning for that. And on another positive note, I just got the feedback, and I reported to the middle schools that we had adopted this, we purchased this portal for math practice, and they continually send emails. And they did say that Alvega or the middle school has completed over two hundred and forty-six thousand math problems and over, covered over nineteen hundred math mathematics standards in doing so. And Alvega and South Middle Schools completed three hundred and forty-eight thousand math problems since we adopted the program, and they covered one thousand seven hundred math mathematics standards in doing so. So, they are using the portal when the students are practicing. So, I thought that was good. Thank you, ladies.
Lord, man.
Um, Mrs. Beazak, can I go back to the career fair, which is great? What does, I mean, I know career fair, I know what that means, but what does that entail as far as, do your parents come with them? Is it not a school?
What I did is that it's a, it's a federal, it's a federal initiative, and we cover...
Is this like, is this the second year?
Yeah, it's the second year, and it's also part, does meet requirements for the college and career readiness standards. And that, our team of guidance counselors today actually had a meeting today to revise. They went to a big symposium where we were advised that we needed to make some revisions to our current plan. And it is part of that transition age, fifth to sixth, uh, eighth to ninth. So, it's part of fifth to sixth that we start exposing them to curriculum order, start careers, so that they would know how to better choose courses advising them to fit.
What kind of a trial?
And then we bus them, it's fifth graders.
And they are a bus?
Yes, they are a bus.
Okay, I, I, after it's supposed, I'd like to get together and talk about it.
Any, any questions for Mrs. Beazak? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hudson, secondary, um, any, any questions for Jason?
I just have something for the executive session.
Okay, Mrs. Britmich, special education?
Currently, I'm working on a report for chapter fourteen, Act sixteen, that has due the expenditure report for students. And I visited two of our alternative schools this past week. They had open offices. Got very confusing reports on our students that are placed there, they're placed for various reasons. It's not always disciplinary. We actually had one of our students return, or about to return at the end of this month from one of those facilities. So, good news on that as well. I'm working on a report that has to do with Chris strengths, and I'm happy to report that for this quarter, there were none for our district. In fact, I want to say for the last several years, there have been none for report for our district. And I'm learning how to do the pen data report. That's a new experience for me. And I want to thank Mr. Blisco because he's helped me through some of that. Um, I've taken a look at our population specialization, and I think I'm happy to report that the percentages come down a little more, hovering around eighteen percent. We were higher than that in the past, so that is good news.
Any questions?
Any questions?
For Mrs. Britmich? Okay, technology, Mr. Boland, thank you, Mrs. Britmich.
Hello, good evening. Um, I don't have anything outside of what was outlined on my board report unless anyone has any questions.
Self-calling tomorrow, okay? Self-calling through the system?
Yes.
Are you the one that physically uploads the meeting agendas the week before meetings?
Yes.
Okay, so just moving forward, then I should text you, but I'm saying one there?
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
You can text me, I'll make sure.
Because I know those are, I mean, they didn't go on until today. And my understanding is that the new policy is they're supposed to go up on the, on the school website when the board gets their patents.
We wanna try it out, but Friday, he was off Friday, and I didn't return to the district till about one-thirty, and it just, it just, I forgot.
Yeah, no, I, and that's why I just don't wanna, I'll do that.
No problem. Just email, text me, and I'll make sure that he or one of his guys are able to get up there. Uh, food service, Mr. Golden?
Actually, Mr. Gray, um, they said, we're still looking for substitutes. Uh, we did pick up, I think we have three on the agenda tonight. So, we have a total of five. I wonder, we have four, two bottom lead. And I knew there's possibly some retirements coming up within the next year or so. So, anybody listening, this is a great opportunity to get into the district. Just covering shifts, that's what we've been doing. Any questions to make? Any questions for Troy?
How's participation been, Mr. Boland?
Actually, it's been really well. We, uh, I signed us up for a breakfast participation challenge, which they would have done this last year because our participation was one through the group last year with breakfast. Uh, but we're maintaining where we were at last year as far as breakfast. Lunch, we've introduced a new menu for this month, just adding some different items on, getting some feedback. Yeah, we're gradually maintaining. At high school, we've actually increased it.
Thank you.
Are we still doing last chance breakfast?
Yes, ma'am.
And the kids, the students, from what you're seeing, are comfortable? They're not getting any backlash if they end up in their home room of rest period? Like, if they choose to go down and get a last chance breakfast?
I haven't received any, but...
Hello, Troy and I have talked about the after-school program. He's gonna further evaluate those numbers, because those numbers aren't what we had last year. It might not be cost-effective to keep that in place, but I think you want to give that some time.
I do. Um, just watching those numbers, it's a dinner program. We have it from high school. It usually seems after the fall sports, it just really cuts off. Sometimes we're starting with one or two students, sometimes not at all. So, we've tried to look at different ways, Mr. Hudson, but I thought of all, you know, the ways to get the students there. However, students that we're feeding are the ones that are staying at school for extracurricular activities. And I just, I'm a numbers guy, so I'm putting numbers together. I'm sure the students got that as well, but see where we're at. I can tell you, since I've come on, the program has not grown. And we've tried some different avenues, and so it may be time to look to see if that program is about you two or this.
Any other questions for Mr. Golden? Thank you, Troy. Uh, transportation, any questions I can answer for transportation? Um, well, I'll talk to the executive session, but it has been, been very difficult. You know, I know I have to thank my principals, Mrs. Beazak, Mrs. Britmich, Mr. Hutchinson, we're all for a little bit of transportation. But I'll talk to our executive session about that. Overall, I know Bill did it before me on Friday, that there was a spot check. The state police do those. And everything was fine over at STA. With the spot check they did, there were no violations or anything they found to be a concern. So, that was good for us and good for STA. Security, school safety, that would be Chief for Mr. Hutchinson. Uh, school security, Act forty-four, Jason, Chief, or Chief of Police. Any questions for Chief? Or Jason?
Dr. Stanton, for it?
Um, yeah, in executive, in executive session, there are a couple of things with student confidentiality. So, I will address that in executive session. I know that we have talked in regards to school safety, Act forty-four, some things we need to be in compliance with, with training for our guards. You know, I know the, is it School Resource Officer Training Chief? You want to tell us about scheduling your guards and how we're gonna...
We're starting, we're starting to schedule them as classes become available. Penn State's offering one now in November, so we've got two schedules for that. I believe we have a total of twelve currently that have to go. So, we're getting there, but we're never gonna meet the deadline in February. It's impossible. You know, there's not enough classes. We can't send them to Mechanicsburg, we can't send them to Harrisburg. So, we're getting, all the ones we can get in class is filling. And hopefully, the state's gonna extend all that, because we're in the same boat with every other school district in Western Pennsylvania. They can't get all their people to these classes. The Cardinals, though, you know, they have twenty people set. They can't do it.
Chief, we did, uh, but offered a conference last week. Ringgold School District has trainers, okay? But they said they would be willing to work with other districts to help make sure that they get their personnel trained. So, maybe we can give Ringgold a call.
From, from what I'm reading in this act, the only thing the state's gonna take is the one that's approved by this national school resource officers, of course.
Their NASRO trained at Ringgold, and they are able to do training from what their superintendent told them. Okay, so we'll call...
All, all the, all the reservations that I have to make, I have to go through the, uh, companies. They're the only ones that, I can't, I can't pull the, companies are offering the training that could put Penn State. I have to register through this national school resource officers group.
Okay. All right, any questions for Chief? Good. Um, anything else under administration, any questions from the board?
I have one question regarding our procurement policy update. Will the district be naming a purchasing agent or we continue with the model? We decide on the day. What the two lead in those positions? Does the policy mention a purchasing agent?
With our custodial supplies?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we did go with a, another consortium for the purchasing of custodial supplies. It did save us, and that is all competitively priced and everything already. So, we did, uh, we did have some savings with the consortium that we went through for custodial supplies.
Andy?
Andy was, yeah, Andy worked with that, and Jim Todd, he keeps chaplains as well. So, the only issue we have is some of the paper towels aren't very good quality. Well, no, those ones that Chuck used, those are, those aren't, those were free. So, those aren't what the consortium that we...
You can tell.
So, but yeah, that, that was already taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Just one more question, is that section that was going on, is that open or is that complete? Is that ongoing?
They are still, it's still ongoing. I know that there were auditors with you last week, correct?
Yes.
And the state auditors I met with, um, we went around, I did do the state schools audit. We visited three schools, which were the high school, Allen Gallatin North, and Smithville Elementary. They were very pleased with what they saw. But we do have to update things in our district plan as far as what we do. All the stuff that we're doing, they love, they saw, but it needs to be reflected in our district plan. It just needs updating. So, but they're gonna give me a final report review with me, and whenever I have that, I will share it. You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you all for attending the work session this evening. Uh, there is indeed for executive session for personnel, student confidentiality, and potential litigation slash real estate concerns as well as, I think that cup, last thing, person now? Okay, thank you. We'll take a ten-minute recess. Is that important?